Anybody have a joke? Great, we're ready.
We're ready.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order this meeting of Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Bellroyd?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
Fahey?
Here.
Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Sorry. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Before us, we have an agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. This, any discussion on, all those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That we have an agenda. Also before us, we have a consent agenda. And inside the consent agenda is our normal sundries of items that we typically bring up. The one that we're most thankful for is the generosity of the community and this month is no different. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahey. This would require a roll call vote.
Bellroyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahey? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, we have before us a consent and an agenda. This is a portion in our program that we do, public forum. Any member of the public that would like to speak is welcome to do so. Typically, the fashion is that you would fill out a white card over there on the table and then be recognized and come up and speak. Is there, I do not have any white cards up here on my desk. Is there anybody that would like to speak from the public? Seeing none, we will move on to our first informational item. The item number one, which is the consi, god, I can't speak this evening. Comprehensive, and comprehensive, excuse me, facilities planning update. Mr. Wald?
Easy for you to say.
Yeah. It's that type of night.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek. At the April 23rd work-study session, administration provided an update to the board regarding comprehensive facilities planning. At that time, it was indicated that we were in the process of selecting a planning team, typically an architectural firm, and a construction manager would serve as owner representative. Through an interview process, we selected Wald Architects and Engineers as the design firm and Kraus Anderson, a company we've worked with for many years in our facilities in White Bear Lake schools as our construction manager. During the past year, we've laid, we've been laying the groundwork to expand on our comprehensive facilities review. We've completed deferred maintenance review by DLR Architects, was presented to the board last summer. An initial demographic study by Hazel Reinhardt Consulting and a follow-up review by Teamworks International that will be shared at our August 27th work-study session. We developed the new strategic plan, which includes eight strategies. Strategy six specifically addresses learning environments. And now, as we assemble our team to engage our community in this process, we have some guests with us tonight. Paul Aplikowski, who is a partner with Wald Architects and Engineers, as well as John Hewnig, who is Vice President and Director of Education. They will provide an overview of the services they'll provide the school district as we continue our work toward comprehensive facilities review. So I'd like to introduce Paul Aplikowski from Wald Architects and Engineers and John Hewnig from Kraus Anderson.
Welcome.
Thank you. As, as he mentioned, I'm Paul Aplikowski, I'm with Wald. You can come up here, come up here. We'll do kind of a team, team presentation here. This is meant partly to introduce our teams to you, but also to talk a little bit about the process and where we're at and where we're going for now. So, we have worked a lot together as companies, over 25 years of history together, and that $700 million in construction is only in the last five years. So we're really familiar with working each other, with each other and have lots of success at doing projects for, for public school districts. We are just the, sort of the tip of the spear for our teams. There's a lot of people that get involved in projects over time. We have project managers, Sal Bagley, much of your staff has seen Sal Bagley now as we've gone around the district interviewing people and, as well as, we have in-house engineers and support consultants that are helping us as we do assessments and all of those kind of things.
John Hewnig with Kraus Anderson. A little bit about me, I've been at Kraus Anderson for almost 25 years now, and in that 25 years, I'd say 95% of it is K-12. So I'll be helping to lead the charge with Paul, but again, there's a lot of other people that you can see that will be involved in this planning process from Gary Benson. Tony is a White Bear graduate, has been with our firm for several years now. I would call him an expert in referend and planning and communication. And then Jason Rettmeister, and I'll let Brian introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Brian Hook. Director of Field Operations, be involved on the field side of the projects, but also helping facilitate pre-construction with our pre-construction managers. And Jason is the Senior Project Manager. Throughout the last couple of years, or the last probably 10 years, been involved in the projects within your district. First one being Oneika.
Andy lives here.
So a little bit about Wald. We specialize in K-12 public schools. The vast majority of our work is here in Minnesota doing that. And one of the things we believe very strongly in is the concept that every community and every school district is unique. So we really work to try to get to know your community and your buildings and your culture as a school district and make sure we're bringing that to everything we do in the district. That involves a great deal of involvement, so right up front from the planning stages as we're doing assessments, the summer in the district, we're out there in your buildings meeting with your staff and talking about what is and isn't working. And that will follow through, right through construction and design of things where we'll have dozens, sometimes hundreds of people involved in projects depending on the size of them, to get a lot of input and again, try to get as much knowledge about your community and how you need to do things best in the future. We also are very well-versed in helping you move master plans forward. As many of you know, the primary way to do that for public school districts in Minnesota is referendums. So in the last 15 years, we've helped over 62 clients get through successful referendums and implement the projects. And we have been working with the administration on a planning process of how to involve people in that, in the effort of creating a master plan and supporting your strategic vision. A big part of it is what we call the cycle of trust. That's having good actions, taking credit for those good actions, and then being responsive to your community so that those things make it back and you adjust your course. And a huge part of our belief system is that we stop and build consensus, particularly around the need. School districts are generally need-based organizations and your public will support you when you have legitimate needs. So for us, it's really about dwelling on that moment and making sure that we can document those things, prove those things, and communicate those things out to all of your stakeholders. In your district, we have a planning process, as again, that I said we've been working on with the administration. That will take several months to get through, and I'll talk about that in a little bit of detail. So far this summer, we're doing what we call data collection. So we've gone around to many of the buildings and done a lot of assessment. We are looking at how you utilize space. We're doing capacity analysis, which will pair with the enrollment projection that you've done. We're looking at safety and security issues in the district. We are furthering the study that you got last year about facility analysis, so we're developing a, basically a line item of all of the things in the district that need to be addressed and working on estimates for all that. We're beginning to work on the questions of your high school programming and how the buildings pair with each other, as well as activities athletic and other background information. So we've been, we've been busy this summer. We've visited all of the buildings at this point. We've also done separate input meetings with eight different departments within the district trying to make sure that we're getting all the information about what you're doing now and what you hope to be doing in the future. And then we've spent nine days in the district just looking at facility assessment in the building. So going from building to building and documenting things that need work. So here's the list, I won't go through that, but those are just a sampling of the meetings that we've done this summer to try to collect input. And these are just the facility analysis, so that's the, the study of maintenance needs in the district that we've done. The plan is to involve your community in some of the planning process, and our thought is that with your support as we go forward, that this fall, there'll be some more community input. We're planning to structure that around basically three large topics, which is learning spaces, community spaces, and physical conditions. And through those three things, we'll really take a comprehensive look at the district and all of the things that go into facilities planning. And that will be, that will help gather information and make decisions. Once we get through that, that's really the agree on need phase that I talked about before, then we will begin options development. And all of that, again, will take several months to get through.
Just a little bit more about Kraus Anderson. I would say on projects like this, I would say eight, nine out of 10 times, we are on board early with your design team, helping in the planning process. And it's about bringing, and Paul talked about this, bringing the community together and getting their input. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about referendum supporting a little bit and about our team. Project budgeting, it's very important when we're talking about a potential referendum in the future, possibly sizable, there's not room to have 5 and 10% error. So we need to be accurate, we need to be involved early. If there's a new facility, we under, we need to work with the city on what their requirements may be in terms of infrastructure. We want to be an extension of your staff. At the end of the day, our fees are gonna be locked in and we're your partner, through today, through the end of the project. And we are ranked, the magazine just came out, the Building Design and Construction, and we are ranked number six in the nation, number one in Minnesota. I'm not gonna talk about all of these study phases. Paul just talked about defining, developing, and collecting this data. That's what they've been doing right now, so I won't go through these bullet points. Pretty soon, we're gonna start to articulate that, which means what could it look like? What are the shapes? And then ultimately putting budgeting, phasing plans together and then preparing that for a potential future referendum that the board so desires. On our referendum support, again, there's, there's a lot of information and different ways to get it out there, a lot of different media outlets that we wanna assist you with. And not only will we help or do the review and comment, which the Minnesota Department Ed will require, so we'll put that together for you, but it's helping develop that information campaign and getting it out there. I'm not gonna talk about these bullet points, but there's a lot of time, there's two paths or two tracks. The information, the district is gonna require to put out information to your community, right? You have to do that legally. But there's also gonna be support groups that are gonna wanna put out information, and it's gonna be part of our jobs to make sure that information is accurate and why you're doing the things you're doing. But again, there's gonna be two different, there's gonna be the school board's information, administration information, along with other community groups putting out information too. But they need to talk to each other so they're all factual when that does hit the street. Let's see, whoops. I'm gonna let Brian just talk about one minute on this. This is after a potential referendum were to pass. Lot of bullet points on here. Brian could maybe spend 45 minutes to talk about it, but he only spent 44 minutes. I told him he has one minute.
Took all my time. So yeah, John touched base on a lot of these, but basically upon successful referendum, pre-construction begins with the information that Wald and their design team have. We'd be taking a look at, looking at preliminary schedules, preliminary estimates, even phasing, sequencing, things like that. It's not a situation where the drawings get drawn and then we're estimating after the fact. We're working with the design team as they're designing. Our goal is to make sure that, that the job stays on budget and is on budget. And the worst-case scenario was the design gets completed or close to completion and then has to be reined back in. So we work as a team with you as owners and with the design team to keep everything in check. It's an evolving process throughout. And that, not only is that on the estimates, that's also on the schedules. So, there's a lot of bullet points there, but that, that's the, the major takeaway from the pre-construction. Once we get in construction, projects bid out, we look at strategic ways and bid that out as far as schedule and the products that are involved, and then manage the construction throughout the evolution of that. Once the project is complete, then we go into the post-construction, which is the warranty phase, and just overall commitment to the owner, making sure everything is, is working properly and is to the best liking of the district. So that's the short version of the bullet, 57 bullet points up there. But I guess, does anybody have any questions on that one in particular?
I think, let's get through this thing, if you don't mind, Marge, and then we can kind of move through, because I know there's questions at the end, if that's all right.
Sure.
I'll remember.
Okay, thank you. Because I think they're almost there.
Yeah, we just wanted to wrap up with, we're both teams that do a lot of K-12 work in Minnesota, we're really quite specialized in that and again, have a lot of experience with each other. We're in each other's office probably almost every day, or not, not us in particular, but members of our team. So we work very tightly together to support your, what you're doing and moving forward with it. So we'll open it up for questions.
Thanks. Ms. Newmaster?
Okay, I'm busy writing it down. I thought this, when I read through it a couple times before the meeting, and I see the summer walkthroughs and, and looking at facility outlines, and the walkthroughs were when basically an administrator is in the building. And I'm wondering when, and I look at, you know, you're looking for more input, but when is it the people that work in the building other than administrators that deal with kids? I know you talk about community and we want community support for everything we do, but our school community that lives and breathes with the kids all day in the building, where is that worked in? So there's significant input. I spent 45 years in a school, so I know how important that is to know the people that are there with 30, 40 kids in the classroom. How do we deal with it?
Sure. We have many ways to involve them in the process. So one is, you're correct that this summer, we're relying a lot on administrators to help us find issues and what to talk about. That really is, I kinda liken that to, we're looking for smoke, and we're gonna try to figure out the areas to focus in on. We will embark on getting more input from various people, so I think the plan is, as we go forward, teaching staff will be part of the, the community group and other input groups that we have to help assess issues. And certainly, as we go forward with options, we'll include them in the discussion about how things might be designed and what possibilities you have for the future. Then when we get to a, a building project, I would pride ourselves, our company, on involving teachers more than any other firm does in that discussion. Typically, what we do for a project is we'll have a core group, and that core group is made up of primarily teachers, but also parents and in some cases, students. And we involve them directly in the decisions about the design of the project. We also break that further apart, and any space that we're gonna touch with a renovation, we'll actually meet with the staff that uses that room. We call those user groups. And we'll go through in detail, where's the light switch gonna be, where's the outlets in the room gonna be, what kind of flooring will be in that room. So we spend a great deal of time doing that, both pre and post referendum.
Okay, and I was thinking, again, I mean, that sounds good, but thinking not just of teachers, but you know, all of our people that work. The people that work in the un-air-conditioned kitchens and all of the folks that are in our buildings, and it's, it's, we're all about the kids and what happens in the classroom, but everybody that works there. And just making sure there is, you know, transparency and time for them to talk and have whatever input they have be at a meaningful stage of development, not after the fact.
Sure. We work very hard at it, and that's a great tip, and we'll make sure we work with the administration to find a way to include everybody.
And if I can add, there'll be a lot of groups too, and we even talked about it one of our last meetings, everywhere from the music orchestra and where maybe their shortfalls may need or what they're looking for. Obviously, there's athletics and obviously academics, right? That's why we're here. So there's a lot of groups too that have time that say, boy, we, we would like or need this. So it'll range all across the board, not only to communities, but to basically special interest groups.
I have several questions. So in this northeast metro area, are there any other school districts that you guys work with together or currently working with together?
Moundsview, there's a referendum just passed last November. In fact, I brought show and tell, there's a binder on the table over there. That's Moundsview of their referendum study alone. And Paul made a prediction today that yours is gonna be thicker than that. And for you, reminder, the referendum was 160 million. Spring Lake Park is another one that we're involved in.
That's a multi-decade one, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've actually helped with Kraus Anderson, we've planned with both Stillwater and Roseville.
Yep, and the plan, yep.
Yep, on the planning side of that. And then, I don't know what, there are still seven metro clients, West Tonka, Bloomington, Wayzata, those are all districts that we work together, Orno, thank you. So, quite a bit.
And then, can you just touch a little bit the difference between having a construction manager and a general contractor? Can you just kind of touch a little bit on the difference and why, why is one better than the other?
Sure, happy to. So a construction manager is someone you hire like today, okay? On a, what I call traditional hard-bid general contractor, you wouldn't have a construction manager. The architect would go through the referendum. If the referendum passes, they put together what we'll call a set of bid documents. At that time, the, you know, the general, you don't know who the general contractor's gonna be. You don't know if they're coming from the Twin Cities, you don't know if they're coming from St. Cloud or Green Bay, Wisconsin. So they're not necessarily a team member, okay? They're, they're contractors, but they weren't on during the pre-construction phase. And hopefully, you get a good general contractor to do the work. We take the general contractor out of the fold, what we call the middle person out of the fold. We still bid it out to the trades, but we're on board from today, all the way through the referendum planning, all the way through pre-construction, and ultimately, we're responsible for your budget, okay? So if design is happening and we have recommendations for Wald to use pre-cast instead of masonry, that's just one example, or trazo instead of this, or LED light fixtures, or this type of mechanical equipment, we have a lot of other internal expertise that are experts in mechanical and architecture to help out only with the pricing and cost estimating, but to help with recommendations on means and method. With a general contractor method, that doesn't happen because they're not on board until the drawings are done. And ultimately, like I said, we're, our fee will be lump sum locked in. We get a zero markup on any change order. A general contractor's gonna get 5 to 10%. So that's another thing we sell a lot to school districts that, set it in the corner, we're done with the fee, now we're your partner, we're extension of your staff. Your administration is in the professional business to teach students, right? We're in the professional business to build schools. So you need a partner looking out for your best interests, from schedule to quality control to budgets, and that will be our responsibility. And for something that White Bear's looking at, I mean, that's, it's gonna be a big feat, like I said, thicker than that book on my, on the table over there. And again, everything's publicly bid out. Everything's 100% transparent in terms of those numbers. Everything we've done with you in the past too, in White Bear for years. Did I answer your question?
No, brilliant, thank you. Any other questions regarding? All right, thank you all very much, we appreciate it, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Next, we'll move to informational item C2, which is the District of Distinction Award, Race to Reduce Partnership. Is this, Ms. Paul?
All right, Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmicek, members of the board. As you know, water quality and conservation has been a major issue here in White Bear Lake area, as well as across the state. And we have been a leader in tackling this issue with the support of some wonderful partners. And so we're here to celebrate being acknowledged as a National District of Distinction from District Administrators Magazine. And as part of that, we wanna celebrate the partners that we have been working with over the years to make this happen. H2O for Life has been an organization that has just been at the forefront of really taking a lead and bringing people into being problem solvers and solution finders in this work. And we've been working with them for several years, and Judy Onifer and Patty Hall are here in the audience, and we're gonna be telling a little bit of our story about the deep work we've been doing with them to celebrate this partnership. In addition, we have Senator Uyghur and Representative Fisher, who have been advocates for us, and actually, we're able to secure some funding for this work, and so we are gonna be celebrating their partnership as well. So first, we've got a couple people here that are gonna be telling the story with me. And first, I'd like to introduce to you Sophie Davis. Sophie is a sophomore at White Bear Lake area schools, but she was first exposed to H2O for Life when she was in third grade. And then when she was in seventh grade, she actually came with us and testified at the legislature in which we were able to secure our initial funding for the Race to Reduce initiative. And so Sophie's gonna share her experience and the impact that this work has had on her. Sophie?
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Sophie. Like she said, I've been involved in H2O for Life since third grade. And in fifth grade was the first time I was able to have a leadership role in H2O for Life, where we met regularly and planned fundraising for our school. Then I, like she said, I had a chance to testify at the legislature, at the senate and the house, and it was a really good experience for me. And it's really taught me important things, some being that something small can really make a difference. When I first was involved in third grade, I never thought I would be helping to get funding for an organization so important. And I've also learned the importance of helping others. For a lot of kids my age, it's easy to, it's hard to look beyond yourself, and it's always been easy for me thanks to everything that I've had experienced. And also, water conservation education has continued to make a major impact in my life. Simply like, the first thing you think of when you think of water conservation is usually like turning off the water when you brush your teeth or something like that. And it's something like I've always done, but I was at my friend's house the other day, and she didn't turn it off and she brushed her teeth, and it blew my mind, like, simple things like that, just, that have stayed with me and affected my life. And I know like in my future, this will have a major impact on my future jobs and everything I do, because I know it's important to, you know, change, make change, and help people's lives. And so I just wanna say thank you to Senator Uyghur and Representative Fisher, because we wouldn't be where we are without you. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Sophie, and I also wanna acknowledge her parents. Chris and Steve are also in the audience, and we know parent as partners in this, Sophie wouldn't have been able to do half the things that she's done representing our districts without parent support. So thank you to Chris and Steve. Next, we have Carrie Trosky, who works in community education. And the work that H2O for Life has been doing expands beyond the traditional classroom experience into our extended day programming, and so she's gonna share a little bit about the impact that this partnership has had on our extended day programming.
Hello, and thank you for having me. Our partnership with Extended Day and H2O for Life and Race to Reduce curriculum is three years strong. We are so grateful for the rich experiences they've offered our students and added to our after-school programming. A couple of the highlighted student experiences would include a Water Warrior Day we've had for the past three years over spring break, where the kiddos get to paint rain barrels. There's one at the Otter Lake Garden, the Birch Lake Garden. They were auctioned off at the Water Symposium the other year. We also have had an April showers and such, week-long after-school youth enrichment opportunity that we've gotten to offer through community ed in our extended day programming, so community kids and extended day kids. H2O for Life has been beyond wonderful to work with. Their staff are passionate, they're generous, and we just really look forward to this continued partnership.
And next, we have Raimi Niambue. And Raimi is a, just finishing his fifth grade year at Otter Lake Elementary School and will be moving into middle school in our district, and he also had the opportunity to testify at the legislature this year. And so he's gonna share a little bit about his experience and the impact that the program has had on him.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the board members for allowing me to share my experience. I would also
I would also like to thank Senator Uyghur for giving me the opportunity to testify about H2O for Life and the Race to Reduce program. Senator Uyghur was very kind to Giada and myself. He took interest in who I am and as an individual, and what makes me tick. I felt like I was the only person in the room when he was talking to me, and when I sat down to play the piano, he was the most attentive audience I'd ever had. He went down eye to eye with me when he was speaking. I was very honored, surprised, and excited when he set up the Tony Santa Award for me. This whole experience has been eye-opening, and I have learned so much in the process. Here are some of the things other students and I have learned about water and water conservation. In the fourth grade, we focused on investigating how we impact water in our communities. We have learned about the water cycle and how groundwater is stored deep underground in an aquifer. In fifth grade, we brought home water and energy conservation kits. The kits include showerheads, light bulbs, and tablets to test water leaks in your toilet. Other grades learn similar lessons. Again, a big thanks to Senator Uyghur, the White Bear Lake School District, and all the teachers from Otter Lake for helping me and other students to learn about H2O for Life and the Race to Reduce.
All right, so, a big thanks to all the teachers across the district that have taken advantage of this wonderful curriculum. Kim Roche is the lead teacher in the district that really spearheaded this work, along with Ann Malwitz, our teaching and learning coordinator, so I want to make sure to acknowledge them as well. So, when Dr. Kasmicek and I were talking about, you know, how do you, how do you take advantage of a moment where you're getting this national honor, but to make sure that you're celebrating the partners that helped make it happen, and we came up with a way that we thought would be one of the most powerful ways we honor people that have high success in this district.
A few of our club events available. Handout to those who participated in tonight's agenda item, and also, I think we have enough for Senator Uyghur and Representative Fisher as well, and thank them for their support. Patty Hall is out here, right? Yep, there's Patty.
Senator Fisher, Representative Fisher, Senator Uyghur, Patty Hall, Judy Onifer, could you please come up, as well as each of the presenters, for a picture, and it would be great if we could do that with the board members?
Sure.
Okay.
Take the track of things.
Hello, everybody.
We're spending, avoid the layers. First row and the second row, that'll help. First row, one line is down here. So, maybe, yeah, so, maybe, yeah, I should, you could come down, and literally, grab a seat, and carry.
Thank you, there we go, you've got a full house. Okay, and then you'll just want to make sure that you can see me, and that your chin can see me, we might come, you might come down.
Sure. If we get close like this, is that where?
Yep, I think you're good, and then, yeah, do you want to come, Marge, do you want to come in this front? You're okay, you're perfect then, okay, if anybody else, I think we'll all kind of do this as well, okay? Look here, one, two, and three. Nice job, thank you. Are you taking mine off? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I just would also like to acknowledge that Raimi's father, Bando, is also here in the audience, and I just want to really acknowledge an appreciation for his support. So, with that, I would like to ask Representative Fisher and Senator Uyghur and Judy Onifer, if they wanted to just say a couple words, give them that opportunity.
Senator, welcome.
Thank you, welcome, that would be three words, but anyhow, it's just an honor to be here, and Sophie, Raimi, you really touched me when I met you at the legislature. You were so convincing to other legislators about the need. This is a real community need about conserving water, not only in the White Bear area, but throughout our planet. And this is a program of distinction. You're doing the right thing, and when you look at the end game for preparing students, when you give them the diploma, they're learning about a real-world challenge issue. Sophie shared, this has changed her life. She's going to be one of those water warriors that our nation and our community will depend on, Raimi and others. So, you know, the testimony that you provided, the examples, the walking, the talk, making this a better place for the future, is what it's all about. So, for us as public officials, where we can be a part of that, I am honored, and I congratulate the school board for being behind this effort. White Bear shined by saying, "We're going to make a difference," and please continue the momentum, and I promise I'll do whatever I can to contribute to this goal as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Representative Fisher, how are you doing here?
Thank you, Chair Mullen and school board. I want to say, this has been a great opportunity to be involved with it. This is a great example of what happens at the grassroots level. When you've got youth and your staff here doing a great job of putting together a great program, and then reaching out to us to let us know what is needed, makes it very easy for us and to act as advocates for you all at the state capitol. So, I think that it's something that you folks should be very proud of, the fact that you've enabled your, not only your administration and your instructors here, but also your students, to give them the power to bring this up, so that we can provide the funding from the state to make these great things happen. I hope that we can continue these partnerships, and we see more great efforts like this from students like Sophie in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Mullen, board, my name's Judy Onifer, I'm the project manager at H2O for Life. I've only been here for two years, so I did not start with this project right from the beginning, but I've gotten to know Sophie and Raimi, so many teachers in this district, and much of your administration. After 35 years in education, half of which was at the leadership and management level, this has been an incredible experience. The teachers that you have in this district are so talented, and this partnership has been some of the most valuable work that I have had in my career. So, congratulations to all of you, and we hope to continue the partnership. There's more work to be done, and we're excited for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy.
I just, Senator Uyghur, I don't often disagree with you, but I think you're giving the board too much credit. We certainly support it, but it's the students, it's the staff, it's our partners that are doing all the work, and it was really great to hear the students speak so eloquently about the effect on them, because that's the reason why we're here. So, thank you very much.
Senator, Representative, before you guys walk, I just wanted to say, you know, those, we have a proud tradition with those pens, so, as you're wearing them, wear them proudly, and especially on the floor of your respected houses, and don't forget to say, "Go Bears."
Yeah.
They are not freely given.
Thank you both very much. Any other questions, comments regarding? Okay, with that, we will move on to item C3, which is something that this board is very passionate about, is the, is an update on the summer career pathway success.
Okay, Chair Mullen, Dr. Kasmicek, members of the board, we have more celebrating to do tonight, because we have had a very ambitious summer of career pathway opportunities and successes that our students and community employers participated in. Our new mission statement highlights us as the community at the forefront of educational excellence, and that is what we're going to talk about tonight, because that is what we are delivering on. In our mission statement, being the forefront of community, of educational excellence, means that each student realizes their unique talents and abilities, and makes meaningful contributions to society. We're here to talk tonight about a significant amount of work, and a detailed explanation of that was put together in your background memo. You'll see a vast array of opportunities that our students had access to this summer. Some opportunities where there were 16, 20 students that were part of one opportunity, some opportunities were serving one student. And we wanted to highlight every single one of these opportunities that happened, because every single individual student matters, and has a unique path that they're thinking about and wanting to explore for themselves, and through the generous time and commitment from employers across the White Bear Lake Area Schools community, we were able to make many of those connections happen this summer. We are all about serving the community by aligning educational opportunities with workforce needs, and we want to help students make informed decisions about their future and their path towards college and career readiness. This is a sampling of the number of partners that were engaged in this work, and this takes a number of priorities from our strategic plan to come together. To be a community at the forefront of educational excellence means that we are going to give our students voice and choice. It means that we are going to look to expand opportunities for students, and it means that we are going to foster partnerships. And this work happens with some remarkable people on staff, and I could name many, many people that are, have a piece in making this happen. But two key people that have joined our team in the last year are our career navigators, Jenny Moore and Jeremy Kirk. They have taken our vision and continue to accelerate and expand opportunities for our students, and so, they're here, along with some of our students and some of our employer partners, to give you just a glimpse of some of these opportunities and what those experience meant to the employers and to the individual students. And again, please take the time to read the detailed background memo, because we want to make sure to acknowledge, and we would have everybody up here sharing about this wonderful work, but we wanted to give the viewing audience and you, the board, a taste of what that work looks like to our students and employers. So, with that, I'm going to hand it off here.
Welcome.
Sarah, hi everyone. So, thank you for having us. I wanted to point out specifically that these are our partners from the summer alone. So, everything you're seeing here, all of our, all the organizations and employers that we worked with, this is just summer, and so, that's something really important that we wanted to focus on, and something else to think about, we've done, been doing a lot of research about why we're doing this, and through Real-Time Talent, which is an organization that does kind of the research about workforce shortages, they did a study on seven-county metro area, and they estimate roughly 63,000 workers of a shortage of workers by 2020. So, in two years, roughly 63,000 workers, and that's focusing specifically on the pathways that we are giving the opportunities to our students. And Jeremy's just going to do a little bit, say a little bit, something as well.
Thank you, members of the board, and Dr. Kasmicek, for your continued support of this program. My big why for continuing to be as excited about this work is we get to work with all students across the whole educational spectrum. Some of our students come to us, and they want to get professional degrees in our industries, and industries beyond our career pathways, and we work with them. Some of our students want to gain employment the Monday after graduation, and we work with them. Some of our students are students with disabilities. Our program celebrates diversity, so, for me, that's the big why. We get to work with all students, help them chase their dream, and it's a lot of fun. Having said that, moving forward, I would like to introduce the board to Sam Abute. Sam is the director of the Minnesota Trades Academy. This is one of our wonderful partners in our construction trades program. This program allows us to provide students with a hands-on experience in 16 different construction trades, but I will let Sam tell you all more about it.
Welcome, Sam.
Hey, thank you. Go Bears.
That's right.
Get brownie points for that already, right? All right, again, thank you so much for having me, it's an honor, a pleasure, I think I see a lot of familiar faces. When you feel like your place is supportive and trusted, all it is, is room for growth. Minnesota Trades Academy is an opportunity for a lot of high school students to earn as and learn about the building trades. We offer two programs. Our Track One program is kind of an entry-level program for sophomores and freshmen to kind of understand the basics, you know, just making sure things are level, things are plump, things are square. They had opportunity to work at the tiny home at Central this year, so if you get a chance, drive around back and take a look at that tiny home, it's on auction right now. We helped out Roosevelt High School this year, build a shed for the football team, and then working with the community, building a patio slab 16 by 20. We also have a Track Two program, which is kind of geared towards an apprenticeship program. It's a nine-week program over the summer, where they get a chance to learn from industry experts. We partner up with ACAM, Apprentice Coordinator Association of Minnesota, where we can go out to all their facility, get expert training, where they learn basically about the history, they see all the tools of the trades, and they get a chance to do a hands-on exercise. We're looking forward to expanding our program. I think we joined the White Bear Lake Area School three years ago, we kind of came about. We only had two interns started our program in 2016. This year, we're so lucky to be able to offer that opportunity to about 17 students from the White Bear Lake Area Schools. Jeremy, again, has been very instrumental in making that happen, he has a big vision. He wants another track. Budget is always a big thing for us, so, I'm honored to be here, whenever I have the opportunity to share what we do, and the main goal is, we know all of our kids are not college-bound. You know, some of our kids want to graduate high school and just go right into a career opportunity. So, what we want to try to do is to make sure that we provide a livable wage for a lot of our young men and women that just want to come out of high school to say, "Hey, I'm a visual learner, I'm a hands-on learner, how do I just transition into that partnership?" So, that's what we're trying to create. Our goal is, again, to increase our placement rate, where they can come out making $18, $20 an hour as an 18-year-old with a high school diploma and a driver's license. So, whenever we can create that opportunity for a lot of young men and women, we're all about it. So, it's just in a nutshell, that's what we do, and then we look forward to the continuous partnership. So, again, thank you so much. Any questions?
Ms. Wilson. Yeah, before we move on on the slides, upper-right corner there, do you pre-screen for fear of heights for these kids, or?
I have flat feet for a certain reason, I'm grounded to earth. That's the Boiler Makers, another great partner out in Ramsey County, where they get a chance to learn about, same picture on the right, you know, high beam, scaling things, they provide really, I mean, when you talk about hands-on experience, this is exactly what they see out in the field. So, yes, for me, you should have seen me, it's baby steps, but to help a lot of our young men and women is, sometimes you have to get up there and get over your fears. We do more than beyond the hands-on experience, we also do a lot of life skills. You know, we talk about teamwork, we talk about overcoming some of your fears, and we do financial literacy, just, you know, just what we see in the industry, we try to kind of replicate that in our program, too. So, behind all this, we do a lot of soft skills, just to kind of get them ready. A lot of industry are looking for skilled workers. With this program, sometimes when they graduate, if they don't have this, they don't have that skill. You know, they come in, they have to get two years' experience, but they come into our program, they get OSHA 10 certified, besides the soft skills and also the hands-on experience. But, yeah, I'd love to share my calendar with you, just come out sometimes and see some of your students in action, you'll be very surprised in what they accomplish over the summer in nine weeks.
Thank you. Sam, I know that I received an email that this, I believe it's this Friday, there's a celebration going on, I believe all the board members got it, so do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Awesome. This Friday, at 12 o'clock, Central High School, we'll be showcasing a lot of our interns this summer, and just highlighting the great accomplishment over the summer. We'll showcase the tiny house that, partnership with Central High School that they finished this year, so it's an opportunity to really see the whole team in one place, and get a chance to hear about the accomplishment, and some refreshments, and, like I say, we struggle with budget, but we do the best we can, and continue to provide this opportunity for a lot of young men and women. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sam? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to thank Sam again, and yes, we are going to continue to grow our relationship with the Minnesota Trades Academy and the Construction Career Pathways Program. They're a wonderful partner of ours. Next, I want to share with you what is called Gen Z Connections. Gen Z Connections is our manufacturing internship program. Our main partner in Gen Z Connections is Vadniss Heights Economic Development Corporation. They do a great job of partnering businesses. And in the last two years, they've partnered our program with these eight businesses and different foundations. And talking with that, I want to introduce you to Isabel Larson. Isabel is one of our eight students who successfully completed the Gen Z Manufacturing Paid Internship Program, and she's going to tell us all about her experience.
Welcome, Isabel.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to start off by saying, it's weird to be called Isabel. I usually go by Bella, so it's an interesting conversation starter. Growing up, I thought I was a little girl-a-girl. I was going to be a ballerina when I grew up, really excited to be a ballerina. But as I grew up, I started to learn that the trades and manufacturing were not just things that guys could do, they were something that girls could do. So I was very interested in getting into that because I had only ever seen guys taking those classes and only a few girls. And I have been taking engineering classes, I'm going into my senior year, so I've been taking engineering classes, one a year since freshman year. And I've really enjoyed every minute in them. But what I didn't, what I wanted more of was the hands-on opportunity. And when in January, sorry, I came across the application for the Gen Z Connections Program. In this program, I got to be hands-on, working with people in our community, with companies that I drove past every day to learn how different little things are worked together to make the things that we use every day. And I found it to be very interesting because I had never seen or thought of how different things were manufactured until I was in there, I was in the moment, and seeing the different machines and the different people that were included in this program. I really enjoyed also becoming OSHA-10 certified. I believe Sam touched on that with the Minnesota Trades Academy. We became OSHA-10 certified in this program as well. So we would work from eight to noon every day of the week for four weeks this summer, and on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we would go to South Campus and work for an additional two hours. And during that time, we got paid to do our OSHA-10 certification. In this certification, we got to learn the different hazards of working in different work environments. And by the end of it, we now have a card that says that we are certified to go into an employer, and if we see hazards, we can bring them up and have them legally addressed. Something that is very key for us in this field. So students that want to pursue this field after school, OSHA-10 certification is a very key component to dealing with that. I really enjoyed my time in the program, so I wanted to say thank you again, and I really enjoyed having this. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that was construction and manufacturing. I have the pleasure of introducing IT and healthcare. So Firefly Computers, we have Raj Shah here, who's the Regional Manager, to talk a little bit about the internships that he offers for our students. And this is not the first year, but the numbers continue to grow, and we're so honored to have him here tonight. He's also White Bear Lake resident. So Raj, come on up and tell us about what you do for our community.
Welcome. Well, thank you very much for having me. I'm Raj Shah, Regional Sales Manager and White Bear resident. I work for a company called Firefly Computers that specializes in K-12 technology solutions to schools. We actually began hiring interns from White Bear Lake at Firefly for about five years ago when we were a smaller company, and it basically started because they were my friends' kids. We've grown a lot in that time, and my kids have gotten older, so I don't know all the residents, it feels like, as much any longer. So we were approached by the Career Pathways Program to start a partnership, and we gladly accepted, knowing that we can't try to know everybody, but working through all these people, we may learn about a lot of other people we were unaware of. This summer, we hired sixteen interns that worked at our facility and were given multiple options of different things they could do in the IT world. Some of them were as simple as working on desktops and laptops and Chromebooks, doing some fixing for warranty work for Lenovo, HP, Acer, and so on. And then others were given the opportunity, if they wanted, to even go out and make very informed sales calls to current customers promoting one specific topic in which they were trained on. Others learned about other aspects of the business where they were able to go to the warehouse and learn about logistics of shipping, receiving, and packaging and everything to send. We are a nationwide company that we sell nationwide, so we would send things all across the country, so how to package and make sure everything arrives safely for those students. In selling technology to schools, I'm sure Mark can attest that it's the busiest time of year for him and for our company, is we're getting everything ready for these schools so they're ready for when the students and the staff arrives to go to school that first day. Knowing that our summer is the busiest season, it was a great partnership for us this summer because kids have a lot of free time in the summer if they don't have a job. So it was great for us in terms of it's our busiest season, it's great for the student in terms of they have the most time available, and it's probably great for parents because they want those kids to have a job so they don't have so much free time. The students that we had, we couldn't even tell you how great the program was for us, and we feel that they would tell you the same thing in terms of how much fun and how much they learned while being employed at Firefly this summer. Moving forward, we hope the program continues, and we appreciate the opportunity to spend the time with the Career Pathways Program and to learn more about all the kids in White Bear Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Raj, just out of curiosity, I heard plant, I heard warehouse, is Firefly headquartered in Minnesota?
It's, yes. It started in actually White Bear Township, and as the business grew, we acquired more space in White Bear Township, and then we grew a little bit too much where we had to move to Arden Hills. So.
The Mounds used school district, sorry.
Anything else? Anybody else have a question?
No.
Thank you very much.
And the pictures you see, those are, that's all from their facility. So we, they invited us in, and those are our students. And if you do the math, I actually had sixty-four, but then when Sam said that five more students graduated, so we're up to sixty-nine students who had internships this summer, and just incredible. And we're just, we're so honored, Jeremy and I are so passionate, just, and we love the support, and it's so great. The final thing we wanted to share with you is something that kind of runs in the health, through the healthcare. And internships are tough with healthcare for a variety of reasons, patient rights and HIPAA. And so Health Partners, which is our insurance provider, partners up with us, and this was their second year, and we expanded to twelve students this year. We actually had twenty-five students apply for the program, so we didn't just pick students right out of the hallways. The students who applied actually really want to go into healthcare. And so we had twelve students complete it. We have Danica Johnson here, who's a rising senior, to talk a little bit about her experience.
Hello. First off, I would like to say that this experience has really opened my eyes to careers that I didn't even know existed. I find this opportunity very useful to students who have no clue on what they want to do after high school, such as like the Health Partners Career Academy. Before this trip, I knew I wanted to pursue the medical field, but I just didn't know what. And after some eye-opening visits, I now know that I would be interested in something along the lines of a first responder or working in the emergency room. But I have now leaned more towards being a paramedic by helping people in life-threatening accidents. I believed it would be interesting and fun. An opportunity like this should be available for more students in more categories. It helps teenagers explore different types of careers. Even if a certain career isn't for them, they have the opportunity to branch out and try others. They have the reassurance that they could look into other jobs that they think would be better for them and for their future.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the healthcare pathway?
All right. So to sum it up, we are so excited about and grateful for all the opportunities that our students had over the summer. And so you haven't seen anything yet. I mean, you've met these two career navigators, you've met many of the people in buildings doing this work. There, there's exciting things ahead for students in White Bear Lake Area Schools. And behind me here are my cabinet colleagues, and they have been instrumental in having this be work that is a priority across the system. And I just want to highlight one of my colleagues who was instrumental in supporting the career navigators and I in developing this Career Pathways brochure. Jenny Moore, I think, is somebody that is willing to take an idea and then just really follow through with a lot of people in order to really bring out the best, best communication possible. And partnering with Marissa, they hit it out of the park. This is really the audience's students, and this is going to, this is already printed. You have one in front of you. We put a copy in the board packet. But communication is the key to a lot of this. You never forget the experience when a student says to you, oh, I didn't do that because I didn't think it was for me. Well, that's not something that we're designing around to happen this year. We are going to continue to find ways to make sure that all of these opportunities are put forward to our students, and we're excited for the next opportunity we have to update you on this exciting work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, for me, I'm just going to say, from a parent with kids in the district, I want to thank all of you for your work. This is great stuff. And I'll tell you, I'm in a lot of different rooms, not only around the metro, but in some other places around the country. And White Bear, there's a reason that we say "go Bears" a lot. White Bear is getting acknowledgement for this work that you guys are doing. So for me, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you all very much for this. This is important stuff. Thank you to our community partners, and thank you to everyone. Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I would just like to add on to Chair Mullin's comments there. I'm thinking back when I was in the White Bear School system, graduated nearly fifty years ago. But there was an entire cadre of students that had no idea what they wanted to do. They had no idea what was out there for them. And they languished for years trying to find their way. And this whole program addresses that very problem. You know, the scholars are always going to find a way into a college or university. I'm proud of the, you know, college programs that we do have are pre-college. But this was a sorely needed avenue that we needed to develop, and I'm so proud that we did. And I, you know, now we're seeing the benefits that are starting to be paid out on that program. So find work, carry on. We're with you all the way.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to information item C4, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmicek.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin, members of the board. So Dr. Cook from the Cambrian Group is here this week. We had terrific conversations about our district's strategic plan with our leadership team today, and we'll continue to engage in the discussion with building leaders tomorrow and Wednesday. I look forward to seeing what the future will bring for our students, families, and staff members. School supply lists, it's hard to believe, but the school year is quickly approaching. Individual school supply lists are currently available on the school and district website Find information about the welcome-back activities on the individual school websites. We are excited to welcome students back officially in September for our staggered first days. So on Tuesday, September fourth, grades six through twelve will begin. On Wednesday, September fifth, grades one through five will begin. And on Thursday, September sixth, our kindergarten students will begin. District community members aged sixty-five and older are invited to apply for our Senior Activity Pass, which allows free entry into a variety of activities for entertainment, home athletic contests, concerts, and theater productions, to name a few. If you'd like to be added to the list, call the Superintendent's Office at (651) 407-7563 to request a free activity pass and a 2018-19 district activities calendar. White Bear Lake Area Schools is currently hiring a variety of positions for the 2018-19 school year. Find employment opportunities on the district's website and join White Bear Nation. Last but not least, two district publications will be arriving in mailboxes very soon. The Community Services Fall Catalog, mailed to all district households, contains information about community services and recreation classes and programs. It also includes a new Bears Bulletin portion with district updates and information. The 2018-19 Activities Calendar has been mailed to families who have students in our schools. Community members who would like a copy can stop by any of our district schools in September or call (651) 407-7563 to request one be mailed to their home. Additional information can be found at the district website at www.isd624.org.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmicek. Any questions regarding the Superintendent's Report? All right, with that, we can move on to discussion items, D1, which is the update on the partnership with McPhail Center of Music.
Thank you, Chair Mullin, members of the board. Dr. Kazmicek, the district has a long, celebrated relationship with the McPhail Center for Music. It's been a win-win relationship with us going back to 2006. It's brought significant opportunity for students at Birch Lake Elementary to have early exposure and in-depth exposure to music programming, music education. It's also brought a strong presence for the McPhail Center in the northeast suburbs. They were largely focused in Minneapolis. In 2006, they were pleased to expand their reach to, to the northeast suburbs. They have nineteen K-12 partnerships now. When we started with them in 2006, we were their third partnership. They had two schools, a charter school and a Catholic school in Minneapolis, and their, their move to White Bear Lake was kind of a big move for them to enter K-12 education. So later tonight, we'll recommend that the board agree to the extending the contract with McPhail Music for the 2018-19 school year. Just to tell you a little bit about the program and what our students' opportunities are. McPhail provides a weekly lesson in our DCD Cluster Program. This past year, we had sixteen students participate in that program. They provide weekly violin lessons for students in grades two to four. Thirty of our students opted in to those violin lessons. Weekly piano lessons for students in grades two to five. We had seventy-five students opt in to that program. They also offer an evening program for students and adults in the northeastern suburbs, and they rent space from us at Birch Lake Elementary for those, for that program. They had a hundred students in the northeast suburbs participate in that. Thirty of them were from our school district area. The cost of the program is fifty thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars for the day program. Now, that cost is offset by rent for the evening classroom space of nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. So the net cost to the program is forty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars. The evening program for McPhail has had its high watermark about five years ago, and they had about two hundred fifty students, students and adults, participating in the classes. And that program has been less successful in recent years. They're down to about a hundred students participating in those evening classes, and as I said, about thirty of them this past year were from zip codes in our attendance area. So that rent in the past was eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. This, for the 2018-19 school year, is going to be nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. If you recall, earlier this year, the board approved a rental rate for community education programs. And when we apply this rate to the program, it's about a twenty-five percent reduction on what, what we would typically charge for nonprofits out of district. I said later in this, this evening, I'll bring this as an operation item if there's any questions. I'm happy to entertain those now.
Any questions regarding Ms. Ellison?
Mr. Wall, I just have a question about the evening program. Do you have a sense of why the numbers have gone down? Is it an issue of transportation, or?
Yeah, I talked to their director, Paul Babcock, and, and they didn't know, but they, they've done a feasibility study in the northeast suburbs for those evening classes, and they think that they're, where they're at right now is probably where it's going to stay. So they're examining the feasibility of continuing to offer those programs in the evening, and will make decisions in the future what that program is going to look like. Right now, they offer ten, ten different programs: voice, violin, cello, guitar, viola, piano, ukulele, and music therapy. So there's a lot of opportunity in those evening classes, and they're, they- And they advertise at age five to 55. And I think in one of their programs, not in White Bear Lake, but they have 100-year-old students. So it's open to everyone. I'll also point out that Jonathan Lucknick, principal of Birch Lake Elementary, is with us tonight, too. So he's happy to answer any questions you might have about the program.
Mr. Chapman?
Basically, Ms. Ellison asked the question. The only comment, I guess, I've got is, I'm wondering if some of that reduction is due to the fact that we have instituted an orchestra program in the last few years. And so kids, those that are, you know, the violin, cello, so forth, they're getting some instruction in the schools versus private lessons. So just a comment.
That might be the case.
All right, Ms. Palloy.
So the evening classes are only done at Birch?
Yes.
Is there any thought to maybe moving them to one of the other northern schools in order to pick up maybe some of those folks in Hugo?
Yeah, I don't know. That would be, we'll be having continued conversations with McPhail as this year progresses and see how their numbers are this year and what their goals are for the future of their program. But the idea of starting it at Birch was that it would draw to all of the northeast suburbs. So students from, families from Arden Hills and Moundsview and Matamita and Stillwater and Roseville, all of the, they advertise in all of those locations. And they hope that White Bear will be the place that draws them to.
If they approached us with a request to expand their evening program in another of our schools, we'd probably be able to accommodate that because it'd be in the evening. So it wouldn't be conflicting with the day, our regular programming. So, but that would probably be initiated by them if they determine through their feasibility study if it was a location issue and they could find a better, you know, sweet spot for that evening program, we'd certainly listen to them.
Ms. Fahy, and then I'll go, Ms. Fahy.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask that question, but I just had a point of clarification about a resolution we passed just a while ago about the threshold for approving. I know this isn't maybe a competitive bidding process, but would it be more relevant for me to ask that in the operational items or could I ask that now?
I think either place.
Either. You know, I'm just, I just want to point a clarification because we just, a few meetings back, we passed a resolution that if it was under $100,000, that was an administrative decision. It was over, then it came to the board. And there was just a small bill that snuck in that they've raised that threshold to $175,000. So I'm just confused, is this something that would fall under that category or is it not a competitive bidding process? I just need some clarification on that.
This is not a competitive bidding process, but it is an agreement that would fall under the, under that, that would apply to that statute. So this is, these two agreements tonight, the McPhail Center for Music and the White Bear Center for the Arts, is, they've been contracts that have come to the board annually for approval. But they do fall within the threshold where it would be appropriate for administrative approval.
Okay, so that was the clarification I wanted because I just wanted to double check with passing that resolution. So ideally, this could be just an administrative decision and not come to the board.
It could be. I think this one, you know, the changes, this is probably one we would have brought forward. Once we learned that the rent, there were some requests about the rent being changed. That's something we may have brought forward anyway, yeah, just to clarify. Just because of the history, this is an item that's been in annual discussion.
Okay, I was just wondering about this, since they raised the threshold to $175,000.
This is, yeah, this is actually within, below the $100,000 threshold.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that threshold has been raised, yeah.
To $175,000, I believe.
Yeah. And the competitive, in the competitive bidding portion of it, I don't know if it's trickled into that, that particular, extended into that particular policy or statute. There are two different statutes we're talking about.
Okay.
But if it was a, in the future, if we were bidding, if we were doing a, let's just say we were doing a small sidewalk project and the project ended up, we estimated it to be $125,000, $150,000, that would be a direct negotiation situation now rather than a competitive bid. That's the statute that changed.
Okay.
Up to $175,000.
That was the one that changed?
Yeah. Now, whether or not that $175,000 applies to the action we just took a month ago, I'd need clarification on that yet. But this contract and the next are below that $100,000 threshold.
$100,000. Okay, thank you. I just needed clarification on that because I was a little confused. Thank you.
Ms. Newmaster?
Well, I want to mention that, I guess, I'm a band booster and a longtime supporter of the arts, and both of my kids are professional musicians and performers. So I love the fact that our students have this extra opportunity. And I'm looking at it from the long view of an old person who's been in this district a long, long time. And I seem to remember that not only is Birch more centrally located than some of our newer schools that would be harder to get people up to perhaps from around the area, but Birch also had low population. That was one of the reasons there was room for this fine program. And there was space for it. It allowed Birch, which was kind of dwindling, to brand themselves as a real arts center. And all of our schools have their own identities. But this allowed them to have a really rich thing. And depending, and I guess because I know how hard it is to move things around, it's the sort of program that you don't easily stick in the back of your trunk and move between two or three schools because they're set up perhaps at a school and it wouldn't be as movable. The students come to the school in the evening. I just wondered, has this been really promoted to our senior forum people?
That's a good question.
Because I think there could be people that, you know, yes, things plateau. Even in sports, things change as sports go up and down. And yes, we offer orchestra, but kids still get private lessons. But I'm wondering if there's another niche market with the seniors who always wanted to do piano or always wanted to play the ukulele. And here's a 100-year-old somewhere taking lessons. And I wonder if that could be featured.
That's a great question. Good input. I understand we have a pretty active ukulele club at our senior program, so maybe some of those folks would want to opt in for more lessons.
I'm just wondering, maybe they teach accordion, who knows?
Thank you.
Maybe Mr. Mullen knows. I don't want to put him on the spot, but if we have the new community services and recreation catalog, so we would perhaps, if it's in here, we would have our answer to your question.
I haven't looked yet.
And if it's not there, we certainly would invite McPhail aware of the fact that this could be an opportunity for them to advertise. We've had other partners, community partners advertise in our, in this catalog, so we could certainly make them aware of that.
It might be here, and I'm just ignorant and I didn't read it carefully enough. But if it's not, sometimes we have other things in here that we haven't featured as much as we should, like some, maybe some of our ECFE things or whatever. And we've said, oh, let's change the cover so we can feature this this time. So maybe we could have a whole lot of different students at the evening program.
That's good.
Featured in the picture.
Ms. Ellison, I know that you had a question.
Just one follow-up question. What is the cost for students participate in this program?
Okay, there's no cost during the school day. So students can opt in for the violin and piano lessons at no cost. For the evening program, it's $41.75 per lesson.
Per lesson? Okay, good, thank you.
Which is pretty competitive.
Ms. Palloy, you had a follow-up?
Does this fit into their schedule like orchestra does? They have it, you have one day where you have your regular music class and then another day you have a separate orchestra class or? The reason I ask is it seems that you, there's at least a proof of concept here that it's working at Birch. So would we just keep it at Birch or why not, why not you start instituting it or possibly at some of the other schools?
I'll let Principal Lucknick answer that question. Excuse me?
Thank you, Tim, and thank you for this chance to answer your question about the partnership. So again, I'm Jonathan Lucknick, and I'm the principal at Birch Lake. And in the, I'm going in my second year as principal. And between the fir, during my first year, the participation went up from 30 students in the lessons to about 100 students in the lessons in grades two through five, as Mr. Wald was talking about. And so we had to go back and look at the scheduling a little bit because the students were kind of coming and going for their McPhail lessons. And I have to say, the staff is very supportive and creative in terms of supporting those opportunities for students. And when we've surveyed them, they really see the benefit of it and have done a lot to make it work. And so to answer your question, we've scheduled them throughout the day, kind of integrated them within our schedule. And McPhail has been a really great partner in terms of being flexible. They have two classrooms that are dedicated to them within the building with some sound reinforcement in them. And they have baby grand pianos in there. And so to the point that was mentioned earlier, it's very much a kind of a permanent type of program, if you will. Or there's some, it would be difficult to move the equipment around and so forth. And so, yeah, we've integrated within the school and see the value in that. And scheduling at times when the teachers aren't delivering their core subject material, times when students are going to various subjects.
Then this is a pull-out, like, like reach or any of those types of programs?
Correct, yeah. The groups are like four to six students typically. And they keep those, if a student goes for piano, for example, year on year, they'll keep them together with students of a similar experience level and kind of build those relationships with the teachers over time. So we definitely value it highly and I think speak on behalf of the community that it's become an increasingly important part of the school. And, you know, it becomes hard to quantify something when, you know, it's been at the school for a number of years. But I've been impressed during my time at the school of how the community values it.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding? Okay, we...
Just point out one more thing, and that's that strategy, number two of our strategic plan is to expand opportunities for students in all grades. And so as we look at our special programming in our elementary schools this year, as part of our Strategy 2.3 is to look at visual arts programming in our elementary schools. So we're going to be looking at our programming in our elementary schools. And I think McPhail Center for the Arts program would be one of those that will be in that consideration in regards to your question about expanding access to other students.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to discussion item D2, which is the update on the partnership with the White Bear Lake Center for the Arts. Mr. Wald?
Yes, well, to your comment, Dr. Newmaster, the arts are alive and well in White Bear Lake. We've had great art, visual arts programming as well as our band, orchestra, and choir program is all top-notch. So thank you, board members, for your support for the arts. Another winning partnership we've had is with the White Bear Center for the Arts. White Bear Lake Area Schools and the White Bear Center for the Arts, partner to provide professional artists' experiences to all students in grades K-5. Partnership initially began with three watercolor lessons. It was expanded in 2011 to two drying lessons, additional, two additional lessons focused on drying. And in 2013, a three-dimensional, one-hour, multicultural lesson was added. We have strong art programming in our secondary schools. And we've had conversation with the board over the past year about visual arts programming in our elementary schools. At the March 26 Work Study Session, we presented multiple options to look at visual arts programming in our elementary schools. And at that time, we were completing our work on the strategic plan. And Strategy 2, 2.3 indicates that we will, will be, is specific to comprehensive visual arts programming in all elementary schools. So that work will can, will move forward this year and will take a close look at what comprehensive visual arts programming in our elementary schools could and should look like. At that March 26 Work Study Session, we recommended to the board that we continue for the 2018-2019 school year, our partnership with the White Bear Center for the Arts. So later on this evening, I'll bring an action item, asking you to approve a contract with the White Bear Center for the Arts. The cost of this program will be the exact same as it was this past year, $85,200.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Chapman?
So we are going to keep the number of lesson status quo then as to, compared to what they were last year, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
May I add just one thing? The thing that would change that is if we changed the number of sections that we have, like at the end of the summer, if we end up adding a couple of sections, and that could impact marginally, there might be an increase just because of the number of sections.
Right. But as far as what each student would receive, it's going to be the same number.
Same programming.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Move on to item D3, which is the report on the district-wide radon testing results.
One of the most compelling reports that school board gets each year is our update on our radon testing. This past winter, one of our local television stations did a story on school districts in Minnesota and their compliance with testing requirements regarding radon. And we did receive a request on that to provide the data that we've shared with the board in the past, provide the data that we've reported to the state of Minnesota. And we complied with that request. And we were highlighted as one of the school districts that is in full compliance with that law. So tonight, our Building Operations Coordinator, Dan Rozier, does an outstanding job of keeping up on all of the requirements in his operational field, which are many, is here to provide you an update of what this year's testing brought to us.
Welcome, Mr. Rozier.
Thank you. So as you're aware, over the winter, from November of 2017 to April of 2018, we put radon detectors in all of our classrooms as recommended by the Department of Health and the EPA. We follow guidelines set by them of when to test, where to place testers, and how long to leave the testers in place. We've got the results back from the lab just last week, and I'm happy to report, all of our results came back well below any corrective action levels that are set by the Department of Health and EPA. These results were similar to the results of 2012, 2013. It's recommended that we test for radon every five years. So our 2013, 2018, and I'm sure we're going to test once again back in 2023 as radon levels change. So we want to be proactive. The CARE-11 news report kind of proved we are proactive. There's a lot of districts in the state that haven't been testing for radon as recommended. We've been testing since 2012. When the reporter called, they were very happy that we were following the correct procedures. And so we're looking good on our radon results. Since we use health and safety funding to do the testing, we're required to do a couple things by statute. First thing is we've got to report our test results to the school board, which I'm doing tonight. And then the next thing, we need to send reports to the Minnesota Department of Health, summarizing each school's results. And I've got them reports all written up, and they'll go in the mail tomorrow. So we'll follow the statutory requirements as well. And as with all of our health and safety programs, if staff or parents want to see results or talk more about our processes, procedures, I'm more than happy to have them come in, sit down. I've got file cabinets that pretty much surround my office, outside my office with archives of radon reports, lead-in water reports, asbestos reports. You name it, we've got it. I'm happy to sit down with concerned parents, and I think we're in good shape. So any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I have no desire to put you on the spot.
You're my radon expert since you're a earth science guy.
Know a bit about it, yeah. And this may well be a question for the State Health Department from you. But I'm curious about why the cyclical nature of radon testing, when it's a byproduct of radioactive decay within bedrock, I mean, certainly, we're not in a, you know, an active tectonic geological zone at all. And if the bedrock is really the chief producer of radon, there's nothing that's going to change that in every five years. And that's really the basis of my question, what's their rationale for requiring repeated testing like that? And, you know, I know, we want to err on the side of caution. And, you know, I know, we want to err on the side of caution, always, but it strikes me that that's a little too often.
Yeah, that's a great question. It is, it isn't cheap, and I think it costs us about $25,000 to test all of our schools combined, so, but I have heard of districts in the metro area, I actually worked in St. Paul, where they, they did have a school that tested positive, or tested high, and mitigation efforts were taking place. So I think they're just erring on the side of caution, and realistically, in schools, our levels are usually lower than what the surrounding homes in our district is, just because we have proper ventilation and we're pulling in outside air, so schools are in better shape, especially if your ventilation systems are in good shape.
If we were around Saint Cloud, I could maybe see it. Granite is a really big producer of radon, but we don't have granite bedrock in our area, so, you know, I'm just, like I said, curious about it.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to our first operational item, E1, which is the action on the partnership for the McPhail Center for Music for 2018, 2019. Mr. Wald? Chair Mullen, members of the board, I won't tell you very much about this, because we just had a discussion item, but the, our recommendation is the board approve the contract with the McPhail Center for Music for the 2018, 2019 school year. I will note one thing, that the dollar amount on the background memo does not match the dollar amount on the contract. Going with what I mentioned earlier, the, the dollar amount is $41,231. With that, we've got a recommendation, which is the administration recommends approval of the partnership with the McPhail Center for Music for the 2018, 2019, consistent with the attached contract. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Any discussion regarding the item? See and none, this will require a roll call vote.
Bellloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, we, we are renewed. With that, we'll move on to operational item E2, which is the action on the partnership with the White Bear Lake Center, White Bear Center for the Arts for 2018, 2019. Mr. Wald? Okay, thank you. Earlier this evening, we shared and discussed information related to our partnership with the White Bear Center for the Arts, who provides elementary art instruction to all students in grades K-5, and we recommend that the school board extend that contract for an additional year, recognizing that strategy two in our strategic plan calls for us to look at comprehensive elementary art program for future school years. With that, we've got a recommended action, the administration is recommending the school board approve the contract for the 2018, 2019 school year in the amount of $85,200. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion regarding the item? This will require a roll call vote.
Bellloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to operational item E3, which is the action on approving the cabinet contracts for 2018, 2019. Dr. Kazmercek?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. So you are presented with contracts for the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Director of Community Services and Recreation, Director of Communications and Community Relations, and Director of Technology and Innovation. The agreements are consistent with other groups, and I highlighted that under a separate memo, and that was a 2% adjustment on salary, and then insurance changes to match the other groups in the district. So this is a one-year, these are one-year agreements, and so I'm recommending approval of those tonight.
With that, we have a recommendation to approve the proposed one-year, 2018, 2019 contracts with the individual members of the superintendent's cabinet. There is a resolution, and I would ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
That the school board approve the one-year, 2018, 2019 individual contracts for cabinet positions to include Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Director of Community Services and Recreation, Director of Communications and Community Relations, and Director of Technology and Innovation.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the resolution? With that, this will require a roll call vote.
Bellloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, those contracts are renewed. With that, we will move to the last operational item, E4, which is action on school board policy, policy 730, which is the use, use of electronic signatures to conduct official business. We typically get policies that come before us, this is the second reading, so Mr. Garrison?
Chair Mullen, members of the board, we have this desire to offer the possibility for electronic signatures to parents. The state of Minnesota has asked us specifically around CLPs to have a board policy in place if we are going to offer that as an option for parents. There was not an MSBA model policy for this, so we worked with legal counsel to draft the policy that you have before you, and we're ready to bring it for approval now, and I'm excited to offer this opportunity for parents.
Okay. Is there, well, let's get a motion and a second, and then we can discuss, we can open it up to discussion. So, the recommended action is to approve school board policy 730, use of electronic signatures for, to conduct official business as recommended by the policy committee and cabinet. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Any discussion? Ms. Ellison?
What is CLP?
Continuing learning plan.
I was basically the first, thank you, yeah.
Yep, it's a part of our, well, our summer programming, or after-school programming in some instances, it's an extension of the regular day. So there's a, there's a statutory requirement to have a continuing learning plan if you, if we're, because we're able to generate additional ADM beyond the 1.0 that a student generally, generally 1.0 would generate, you can go above that, however, you need to have a continuing learning plan in place. So this is the way for parents to sign it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions under discussion? With that, see, Ms. Newmaster?
I just have one really quick one. When you do an electronic signature, let's say when you get your taxes, you're sitting with the tax preparer when you start it, he knows who you are, he's seen your ID, you put the signature on it, every single time they put it on another page in the document, you tap the approval. So there's a, there's a real match between the person and the signature and the consent. I've read this 10 times, so I'm still wondering, are we going to allow people to just send their signature in, or is there going to be a face-to-face ID, so when you take an electronic signature from one of us, it's had our approval, it at least would be done as well as H&R Block does?
Yeah, the policy itself lays out the framework by which we can accept them. It's on us to develop the exact way that we do that. You know, right now, we rely on people logging into a system like Skyward and validating their, their identity that way, and that's just something we're going to be working on as we move forward, but we need this policy in place even to work on that and be in compliance with the state, so this is kind of the first step in that process.
So that's why it wasn't, as I was reading through it, I was looking for some procedure where you actually get confirmation that this is the person's approval.
That's the next phase of this process, right?
Yeah, and I'm thinking of how we've gone so quickly from the chip card that you gave the code to, to now just put the chip card in, and they don't even ask you for a code. I don't even want to use their chip card anymore. You can lose your card, and anybody can use it. So I just think we, we need to, to make sure there's security.
I think in some ways, we're actually catching up to our practice. For example, I just signed up a child for a student activity, and it's all done electronically. I signed it electronically. So I think our policy is now catching up to our practice, at the recommendation of the Department of Education. MSBA, as Mark mentioned, doesn't have a model, so we actually developed this with, with the help of legal counsel. So we actually feel pretty good about where we're at in terms of the fact that we are a bit closer to where we should be than we certainly were as of, well, not quite yet, after you act on this tonight. We're a bit closer to where we should be than we were just last night, so I think we're making good strides.
Yeah, I agree, we need a model. I just think there's so many ways, we're going to have to really button that down better than some of the commercial. We have many creative people and students.
Any other comments, questions regarding the action? With that, the, there's been a, a motion and a second to adopt policy 730. All in favor of doing so, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, the policy is adopted. With that, we will come to our board forum portion of the school board. If any board members have anything they'd like to say, this is the time to do that. Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, I sent out an email yesterday, I believe, the 916 new facility, Quora, is opening up for this school year, and, and Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 15th, from 2:00 to 6:00, it's going to be an open house, basically, for anybody that wants to come and check out the facility. There's going to be tours, I believe, on every half hour. I will be at the, September, I won't be able to make it at this particular event, but the board, 916 board, will be given a tour in September. It promises to be quite a facility. I've seen pictures of it as it's been going up, and it looks like it's going to be quite, quite the facility for our, for our children with special needs and, and other children that we refer to, 916.
All right, anything else under board forum? With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
I will second that, and we are adjourned.
Not only your name.